Who work in the following areas. They work towards keeping families intact. They work towards improving community services to youth. They advocate for youth and collaborate with other people and agencies to benefit the youth. This year's Behavior Management Systems Family Pathways Youth Service Award is being presented to the Juvenile Intensive Probation Program, JIP. Paul Kiefer and Jessica Miller are the court service officers on JIP who've worked with Family Pathways, with the Family Pathway staff over the last year. Through their dedication and supervision of our most at-risk youth in the community, our staff who serve adolescents and their families have had many opportunities to work with Jessica and Paul. The JIP program and the officers who are supervising youth on intensive probation are committed to improving services to families and keeping families intact. Their ability to balance accountability and compassion are a major component for the successes that kids and their families feel when working with Paul and Jessica. Also, other agents, also, their willingness to communicate not only with families but also with other agencies is another reason why Jessica and Paul have been able to connect with kids, adults, and other professionals in our community. These two people have been an important component to the treatment of the youth that we at Family Pathways serve. We would like to extend our appreciation for the intervention and support they provide by giving them this Youth Service Award.
Thank you very much. And thank you, County Commissioners, for letting us.
Thank you, and I might call attention to Mental Health Awareness and Suicide Prevention Day. Would you like to comment on that, please?
Absolutely. I gave you all a flyer.
And your name?
My name is Debbie Simmonsma. I'm the Marketing Director at Behavior Management Systems. I gave you all a flyer today telling you about an event that's being planned with a collaborative of six organizations here in Rapid City providing mental health services. And the event is going to be hauled at Main Street Square, May 24th, from 5:00 to 7:00. It should be sort of a fun day. We want to bring about awareness of mental health issues and that treatment is available. One out of four Americans are, have a diagnosable and treatable mental health disorder. Unfortunately, only 50% reach out and get help because of stigma associated with it, and also for funding. Sometimes they don't have the funds either. So this event is to emphasize the services that are available and that we want to speak out and be open about mental health issues. We will have a suicide survivor speaking. Also, one of our clients who has, is living successfully with mental illness, who has been diagnosed for 20 years of his life with mental illness, but is still able to be successful and productive in our community. So we hope you can join us and invite anyone else, too. It will have music and free food, and the speakers, our mayor and a proclamation from the governor, being read by Amy Iverson Polroyes. She's the Deputy Secretary of Health and Human Services. And also, Pennington County Sheriff, Tom, will be there as well. So, thank you, and we hope to see you there.
Thank you. Next item is the appointment of the Pennington County Extension Advisory Board. And in our packets, we have letters of submission from candidates. We have information relative to the census and some of the requirements relative to membership on this board. I hope you've had a chance to examine that. We have several of the applicants here, and I'm sure they all have a campaign speech ready. So, we'll just go down the ballot. Richard Bray is here. Would you care to step up to the podium and present yourself, please?
I'm Richard Bray. I've been with, had exposure with the 4H Western Junior Livestock Show for many years, and also was a 4H leader. I think that my exposure with that and can, I can lend something to the particular board we're speaking about.
Any questions to Mr. Bray?
It's good to see you.
Thank you. Patty Brunner is the next candidate on the agenda. She is not here. Am I correct? Is Heath Frye here?
He also had a prior case.
Next is Pam Kiefer.
Commissioners, my name is Pam Kiefer, and I served on the Extension Advisory Board from January 2009 to November 2011, when it was, wasn't really disbanded, but a lot of controversy and activities going on with SDSU. And so, we've kind of, just sort of gone to the wayside, and I would like to apply for this position, if that's what we call that. And I, we've had a new set of bylaws, and in the bylaws, of course, the purpose of the board is to provide guidance and direction for you people, for the county commissioners, in development, delivery, and evaluation of the 4H programs and services. The Extension Board is responsible for assisting the 4Hers and for the people involved in the advisory part or the maintenance part of the 4H, part of the program, in developing and presenting the budget, the county budget, to you. So, I do have a vested, a vested interest in 4H because my daughters were both in 4H. My husband was in 4H a long time ago. I came from the eastern part of the state, and it didn't seem like 4H was as, I'm sure it was active, but I guess I didn't know that much about it. But we certainly got our children involved, and my husband was involved. And I have two grandchildren involved in that, Madeline and Elliot Vassal, and they're involved in the shooting sports and the archery, and they have, belong to a 4H club, and they really like to be active in there. So I'd like to also stay active because of my background, serving on the Extension Board, and then also helping with my, participating in the 4H through my grandchildren and formally through my children. So, I believe in 4H. I think it's a good way to start our children, and I want to see it continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for Mrs. Kiefer? Next on the ballot is Heath Frye. He is not here, that correct? Delores Kanupi, Janice Morgan, and Mary Williams. We're fortunate to have seven good citizens who have applied. We have resumes and applications in our packet for each. We, we have a ballot, and what I'm going to ask the board to do is each member to vote for six. And then, we'll have our secretary tally the vote, and the low-vote getter will drop off. That will leave six. Then, I would ask the board to make a motion to officially sanction the election. And if we get three votes, then those six will be the people that will serve on the Extension Board. Does that sound fair? Clear? At this point, you may move into the voting booth, mark your ballots, please. Be sure to mark within the lines as the dots.
So the machine can read it, huh?
Turn your ballots in.
came up with.
Okay, so we have Richard Bray, Heath Frye, Pam Kiefer, Delores Kanupi, Janice Morgan, and Mary Williams, the six who received the most votes. Is there a motion by a commissioner?
I move to, shall I say, accept the voting results?
I think move to approve the six membership for the Extension Advisory Board.
Okay. I move to approve the six membership.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the membership of the Extension Board as the ballots indicate. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. You have an Extension Board.
Just in time, right?
Yes.
And thank each of you for serving. Next item is Community Healthcare Center update from Mr. Tim Tredhart.
Good morning, Tim.
How are you guys? Thank you very much. I've prepared about a three-hour presentation for you, so sit back, buckle up. I am Tim Tredhart, the CEO for the Community Health Center of the Black Hills. I just kind of wanted to give you guys kind of a quick update in terms of the Community Health Center, where we're at, what we do, why it's so important for the county, and why we appreciate you guys' partnership with the Community Health Center. The Community Health Center, we've been around since 1992, and we've grown exponentially every year since that period of time. Right now, we have 13 medical and dental providers that are working for us, and we've got another four or five volunteers that come in to see us. And we have a staff of about 75, seeing patients from throughout the Black Hills, but obviously primarily from the Pennington County region. We are basically, I always say in a nutshell, it's pretty simple. We're a bunch of docs and dentists providing basic primary medical care. And our goal is to make sure that everybody has access to care so that they don't go to more expensive options, so that they don't get worse and end up costing us more, and so that we can make sure that everybody gets the access to the basic care that they need. I'll tell you, the easiest way that I can describe this is actually from a patient of ours by the name of Danielle. She's a single mother. She has four young boys that she's raising all by herself, and she works full-time. She makes $8.75 an hour. So, basically, that works out to about $18,000 annually that she makes. All four of her boys are covered by Medicaid, so they can get the healthcare that they need, the dental care that they need, if they can find a doctor or a dentist who will accept Medicaid, which is more and more a challenge as Medicaid doesn't reimburse that well. And for a lot of providers, they would choose not to, or they limit the number of Medicaid patients that they will see. So that's a challenge for them. But Danielle, I'm going to figure out how to advance here. She's uninsured. Is there a secret to this?
Technically challenged.
Yeah, me and you both.
Just, it should be in.
Hey, look at that. She's uninsured, and so she pays for all of her healthcare out of her own pocket, which, when obviously she's trying to raise four kids on a budget of $18,000, she puts off a lot of primary care. She doesn't go to the doctor quite as regularly as probably a lot of us should. She recently came down with bronchitis a couple of months ago. Now, she suffers from asthma, and so she came down with bronchitis, and she was faced with the, now what? What does she do? What are her options? Her options are that she has to pay out of pocket. And so if she goes to see a doctor, that could be $150 just to see the doctor. Another, you know, 100 bucks for an x-ray, taking an x-ray of the chest. If the doc prescribes any medicine, she's got to figure out a way to pay for that. She's got to figure out how to do that on that budget that she's using, that $18,000 a year that she's making with those four kids. She's already got one son who has asthma, and she puts a lot of money into taking care of him. And so, obviously, a lot of people in this situation would put off going to the doctor. And then the bronchitis could get worse, and she could end up going to the emergency room. And in the emergency room, the cost of care there would be exponentially higher than it would be. So she comes to the Community Health Center of the Black Hills. And because of her family size and her income level, she qualifies on our sliding scale. And so she still pays for her healthcare out of her own pocket, but she pays based on how much money she makes and how big of a family she has. So, at the Community Health Center, she pays $15, and she can see a doctor, she can get that x-ray, and she can get a prescription for an antibiotic so that she can take care of that bronchitis, that she doesn't get sicker, so that she can continue to work and take care of her family and to raise those kids. And that's what the Community Health Center is. That's the safety net that we basically are. We see roughly, you can see roughly about 40,000 medical visits every year. Dental visits are roughly around 6,000. And one of the areas that we're seeing, it's apt that this is Mental Health Month, is that mental health visits. We're seeing an increase from 2010 to 2011. We saw 13% jump here. We have a desperate need for mental health needs within our community, and we see that at the Community Health Center. Again, we're access for all. This is kind of a complicated little chart there, but basically, in summary, what this shows is the light blue columns is basically, the columns on the left are pediatric patients. We don't have a whole lot of uninsured pediatric patients. We've got a lot of patients that come through that are Medicaid patients. And like I said, for them, it's about making sure that they have a doc that they can go to see, a dentist that they can go to see. Because just because they're covered by insurance doesn't always mean that they can get in to see someone. You've got to be able to have a doc to be able to see them. 62% of our adults are uninsured, so we've got a lot of uninsured people coming through here. The other thing, the big trend that we are seeing, is that on our sliding scale, this is the percentage of people that are at the very bottom of our sliding scale. And each year, we're seeing that increase. Last year, it was at 38%. So far this year, I can tell you the numbers probably look even higher for 2012. And basically, what this shows is those people that are poor are getting poorer, and so our, the access for our services are even more important, even though our numbers aren't growing. Basically, the economic impact of it is. Right now, we've got a number of sites all through town. You guys are probably familiar with our main health site, which is right in the same parking lot with Pennington County Health and Human Services. Across the street from that is our dental clinic that we run. Down, back behind Sonic on Mount Rushmore Road is our pediatric clinic, where we catered, basically, obviously, to the kids. And then our newest clinic is our school-based health center at General Beatle Elementary School, which is really, really cool, where we've got docs and dentists working in the same clinic, taking care of both kids and adults. And it's a fabulous little clinic. We are crammed for space, and as you guys know, we've been looking for ways to grow and how to weaken the growing needs. Earlier this year, we purchased some land from the school district where Burke West Elementary School used to be, at 725 East Philadelphia, just a couple blocks south of East North Street. And our plan is to, again, take our main adult clinic, our dental clinic, and our pediatric clinic, and combine them all into one clinic and be able to integrate, basically, a medical home. We find a lot of our patients that come through for dental care may not have a primary care doctor because they're coming to see us because their tooth is abscessed. You know, they've put off basic care until they come to get their tooth taken care of, until they absolutely have to. But they might not have a regular doc that they see. And vice versa, we'll see somebody that will come into the primary care clinic because they've picked up a sexually transmitted disease. Well, they probably aren't getting their teeth cleaned either, and we probably need to get them in to see a dentist as well. So, we're hoping that we can integrate our home, and that will make us, obviously, much more efficient. So, we're basically fundraising for all of that. So, and we're working, obviously, as I know you guys are aware of, in terms of with Pennington County, in terms of how we can collaborate with Pennington County, other partners. Alan's here from Behavior Management Systems. The more we can integrate within that sort of site into a collaborative sort of thing, the better. And we work with a lot of partners. One, beyond the county, regional health, Department of Health, city, county, the list goes on and on of all these collaborative partners. And for a lot of these people, it makes sense for us to work with them from a health standpoint, obviously, to care for their health. And then, frankly, it makes a lot of economic sense for a lot of these partners. I mean, we save the hospital a lot of money for patients that come to see us. Danielle coming to see us to take care of her bronchitis prevents her from going to the emergency room for probably care that she, is an appropriate admission into the emergency room, and costs, the hospital costs us as taxpayers a lot more money. And so it's a much more cost-effective alternative for Danielle in a much more effective way. So, on behalf of our Board of Directors, of which Nancy is, Ms. Troutman, is an ex officio member of our board, and so we're very grateful for her participation. Thank you, as always, for your ongoing support.
Any questions? Comments?
Mr. Chair, I guess one of the things that I would like to emphasize, and certainly Tim talked about it, but, and I can't really put words in Karen Romy's mouth, but certainly I've had conversations with her about how much, or how very important it is to the county to work with community health, because they have many programs they've been able to combine efforts with to, to minimize costs to the county as well as community health. And that has been a huge cost savings for the county. So I appreciate community health being willing to do that with us. I mean, it's a win-win for everybody, but certainly you have to have partners that are willing to work together, and I appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you.
I guess the other thing I might mention, and I know, I know we're still in the planning stage on your building and the, hopefully, being able to bring County Health and Human Services in as a partner in that. But, you know, just for the public's information, I mean, we're, we're looking at trying to pull Health and Human Services in with your full complex because Karen is dealing with the same people that you're dealing with. And so it just makes sense. And I, and I compliment you and congratulate you on all the partnerships you've got going, because I think, again, for the taxpayers, not just the people you're serving. I mean, obviously, the people you're serving, it's a great benefit to them, but it's also a good benefit to the taxpayers, because we're not, everybody's not running their own little camp. So, good job.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, items from the auditor. First one being the annexation to the Flume Lane Road District.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I've received notification from the Flume Lane Road District of an annexation request from William and Nancy Ewing. They have petitioned the board, and the board has, of the Flume Lane has approved that annexation. All requests must go through the minutes for taxation purposes. So what I need today from the board is to approve the annexation to the Flume Lane Road District for the following property, legal included. for the following property, legal included, effective for the 2012 tax year and thereafter.
That's my motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the annexation to the Flume Lane Road District. Any discussion from the commission, from the audience? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item B. Notice of consideration to amend the order for an election on the formation of the Scenic Canata Basin Ambulance District.
As I had provided a letter to the board on May eighth, it has come to our attention that the original legal for the Scenic Canata Basin Ambulance District did not meet the map attached. It missed including most of the scenic township. This wasn't discovered until late in the process. And so in contacting Mr. Alderman, his recommendation of the process to follow is to amend the order for election on the formation of the Scenic Canata Basin Ambulance District, previously adopted by the board on May first, and correct the legal and therefore then approve the motion to set the election and reestablish the boundaries.
And if I read that correctly, the election date on the amendment would be different than it was on the motion itself?
No, the election we're still pending will be on June tenth.
I thought I read July.
That's on Eastern Pennington.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So are we...
It's June twelfth, between two and seven.
I was mixing them up.
Yes. We need to amend the first one because when Wal... When the Eastern Pennington Ambulance District came in to create their legal, they said that they wanted to include all the properties that Scenic Canata did not. And because there was an error in that legal not matching the map attached to the budget... To the petitions for circulation, then we need to amend theirs from the original letter sent to you. But the election dates are different.
Thank you.
So in... And we need to set the boundaries, and then we'll include the legal in the minutes.
So your first motion is to amend the legal description? We've done that, right?
To consider the amendment, to amend the order of the election for the formation of the Scenic Canata Basin Ambulance District, previously adopted by the board on May twelfth. That's your first step. And then you issue the order to amend the election. It's from the agenda.
Yeah, we've got to approve the annexation. Then we've got this.
First, we're gonna do number two, which is the amendment.
That's what I was asking, and she said no.
The wording that you need is to amend the order of for the election on the formation of the Scenic Canata Basin Ambulance District.
Okay.
You need to amend the motion, yeah.
I'll just...
And set the new boundaries.
I'll just make the motion as per your wording.
Yes.
Does that work?
Yes. Which comes from...
I don't have anything here about that, so I... Okay.
Yeah, it comes from the agenda, yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Secretary is clear on the wording?
Okay.
Any further discussion? From the commission, from the audience? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item C.
This is for the Eastern Pennington, which they've named it that rather than the Wal. And this, the May fourteenth memo attached has the corrected legal withdrawing the properties that we have added to Scenic Canata to match their map. So really, you need to just motion to order that the election be held on July tenth, 2012, at seven a.m. to seven p.m. For determination of the organization of the Eastern Pennington County Ambulance District, setting the boundaries as follows, where we will include the legal, and that if the question for organization should pass, an election for the first board of trustees for the newly organized district will be held at a future date.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion and not reread it.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Both people within the districts appreciate all the work that the county's done on this and especially for the commissioners in fixing the legal for us, which was just simply a human error. We're not perfect.
You have certainly done a lot of work on this and...
Yes, and so has the Director of Equalization. And we will be very happy when these both, these ambulance districts are formed. Thank you.
Thank you. Item sixteen. Twenty twelve Justice, sixteen A, I should say. Justice Assistance Grant Information.
Did that get polled, or... It says removed.
It survived the emergency exercise.
Yes, it survived the mock exercise. Kevin Tome, Pennington County Sheriff, just briefly. This is an annual grant that we apply for jointly with the Rapid City Police Department. There's two requirements in the grant. One is that we give the commission notice. And the second one is that we do a public notice and allow for public comment, which it'll be published in the paper like it is each year. It's an amount of sixty-six thousand dollars. It'll be applied towards our joint records management system that the police department and sheriff's office uses. And in terms of action from the commission, all it requires is, I guess, an acknowledgement of the report. It doesn't require the chairman's signature or anything. Just an information item.
Any questions or comments?
Just that I'm really thankful that we can have that cooperation. I think it pays off in so many ways. And I'm just really thankful, not only that Don started it, but that you're continuing it. Thank you.
Then Sheriff Holloway and Chief Hennies knit those two departments together, and it serves the community well, so...
I know this is not on the agenda, but would you care to comment on Commissioner Troutman's conduct during the emergency program?
During the mock exercise where she was mocking us? Yeah, no. She was well behaved.
We're happy to hear that. Thank you. Item seventeen. Items from equalization, abatement application.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Dawn Puckett. I'm one of the appraisers in equalization. Shannon asked me to come over and visit with you guys regarding this abatement. He did share a memo with you on April fifth regarding this abatement. He wanted you to know that the veterans exemption for Mr. Dietzmann was applied to the 2012 assessment. That was the first year that the application was filed timely. And so it's the first year that this would be applicable. State statute allows abatement of the disabled veterans exemption when the veteran would have qualified in the previous year, but he missed the deadline for filing. The statute says you may grant an abatement, but it is not required that you granted. Shannon's recommendation was the denial of the abatement based on prior history of the commission denying these abatements because of the reason of untimely application. In previous years, Mr. Dietzmann had applied for the abatement, and it was denied by the commission for the same reason.
So if he had applied before and it was denied, why didn't he make his application in time? Do you know what the circumstances were?
I do not know.
Excuse me, I'm Mr. Dietzmann, the wife.
Okay.
The reason that it was never done until last year is because we were never made aware of it.
Identify yourself, please.
I'm Camilla Dietzmann. The reason that it was never applied for before last year, last January, is because we were never made aware of it. When I talked to the people at the equalization office several times, they never told us about it. Last year, when we finally found out about it, it was in January. The application was supposed to have been filed in November. They said that the VA should have notified us. We do not recall ever getting notified from the VA of this. And we had gone down to the Director of Equalization Office several times, and they never informed us of it. And so I guess we never knew about it till last January, and that's when we filed the form.
And you've, and at that time, then you filed for an abatement on your 2010 taxes?
Yes, and it was denied. And so we decided to try it again this year because we... You know, I guess maybe it was ignorance on our part, but also I feel like we should have been notified. My husband goes down there and talks to those people, you know, and he... He always wears a veteran's hat and everything, so it's pretty obvious he's a veteran. And I just feel like, you know, they could've... You know, he explained to them that he was a veteran, that he hadn't been receiving pay increases or anything else, as you're aware of and stuff. But nobody brought this up to us until last year in January. And that's when we filed the form.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question. Maybe you can help us. I don't know, it may be a treasurer's question. But I know that she sends out information to seniors on these kinds of, this type of thing. Do you know if she does it for veterans?
To my knowledge, no. I think the only ones that they send to the seniors are the ones who've already applied. So there's probably people out there who could benefit from the exemption, but...
How do we find them?
Right. You know, just...
I know she puts things... I mean, there's been public notices. She goes around to senior groups and talks to them.
That's what I was gonna say. You know, public notices is probably the only way it really gets out there. And if it's in the paper and people don't read the paper, why...
Okay, I have seen in the paper, but it always refers to just seniors. It doesn't refer to a hundred percent disabled vets.
Mr. Chair, I have a question of the state's attorney.
Jay, is there, is there something in that statute that talks about some qualifiers on the commission abating these veteran taxes? I was thinking there was something that there were some qualifiers.
I'm not aware of any. Off the top of my head, I'm also not aware of any requirement that the county try to seek out every veteran or every senior and notify them. I could certainly, if you want me, I could try to look at that and bring this item back up a little later if you'd want me to do it.
I was thinking, and I don't have the statute here, but I was thinking that we had discussed this once before, and there was something that said if a veteran is, is... There were some qualifiers on things that excluded them from filing that allowed us to make this abatement versus just because they wasn't aware of it and didn't make the application in time.
I certainly wasn't aware of the issue before just now. So I mean, I'd certainly be willing to go see if I could find some information. And if you wanna just table or continue the item down the agenda a little bit, bring it back up when I'm ready to present something to you, I'd be glad to do that.
If that would be all right with the chair, I'd like to, I'd like to give the state's attorney an opportunity to look at that and advise us.
You can certainly do that. Where would you like to have us move it down to, Jay? Do you have a...
We can move it down until Jay gets back. How's that? And then that lady, the lady wouldn't have to stay too long.
That'd be fine. Do we need to do a motion to do that, or...
Yes, we need to make a motion to table it.
That'd be my motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, we have the Highway Department.
Good morning.
Morning, Heidi.
Heidi Jung, Pennington County Highway Superintendent. First item I have is award recommendation. We opened bids for bridge repairs on three structures on Nemo Road. We received five bids. High bid was a hundred and seventy thousand eight sixty and a low bid of a hundred and forty thousand four hundred... Hundred and forty thousand four oh six from Core Construction Services of Hermosa, South Dakota. And we were recommend award to that company for repair of these structures.
I make a motion to award Nemo Road Bridge Repairs to the low bidder, Core Construction Services, Inc., Hermosa, South Dakota, in the amount of a hundred and forty thousand four hundred and six dollars.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Next item is federal aid surface transportation program resolution for countywide signing project. I received an email from Lance Berger, a county road engineer from local government assistance office, DOT, outlining a replacement sign program for local governments. It's a hundred percent funded with federal rural safety improvement funds, RSI funds, and other safety funds. This program has been around for a couple of years, but originally, counties had to use their FAS funds to help fund this. And we had so many needs with the Sheridan Lake Road reconstruction and other reconstruction projects that I felt we shouldn't get involved. But since that time, the state's been receiving rural safety funds from Safety Lou, and the restrictions were pretty tight. You had to have an area where you had a high concentration of accidents. And then they would look at that area throughout the state on rural roads, and you could possibly get funding. Well, statewide, there was not... There was very few areas on rural roads that had a concentrated accident site. So they relaxed the rules a little bit, and they're now allowing those safety funds to be spent for rural road signing. In other words, improve our signing and get better retrorefectivity signs out there. And so when it came about with a hundred percent federal funds, I decided, well, maybe we should look at it a little closer. We have ten thousand nine hundred and thirty-six traffic signs in Pennington County. And we also have three thousand six hundred and eighty-four street signs in the county. We probably have more street signs than that, but our inventory doesn't consider a lot of the subdivisions. And when the developers require to put those signs up, I don't go out and put those in inventory, so there's probably a lot more out there. But anyway, we... I put together some numbers and estimated cost and just to replace our traffic signs in the year 2020, which is the first where we get placed into the program because there's other counties that have got on the list. We'd need seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand. And then if we added in our street name signs, that would be another three hundred thousand. And then the program also allows to include townships and road districts. And at the time, the funding becomes available and ready to enter into an agreement, the state will go to all those townships and road districts and see if they would want to be involved in the program when we get to the point, probably in 2018. So I'm asking for commissioner's approval for a resolution, which we have an estimated total countywide signing project at one million five hundred and thirty-seven thousand three hundred dollars to be programmed in approximately year 2020. And if you agree with my information and estimates, I guess I would ask for you to approve the attached resolution to get sent in the peer and get our list on the program. And there's no guarantee the program will be there in 2020. But at least if rural road safety funds are still available, possibly we could not only help the county with our signing, but also the townships and road districts.
Heidi, do you want to mention the, the reflectivity requirements that the federal government is saying we need to do? And this kind of plays into this. Some of it is a federal regulation coming at us.
In 2009, the M U T... In, uh, two thousand nine, the MUTCD, which is a man of, manual on uniform traffic control, put a retro reflectivity standard in the manual. So all signs have to meet a minimum retro reflectivity. So at night, as a population gets older, it's harder to see signs, so they have to reflect better. So all of our rural addressing signs that were put up when the nine-one-one system came into effect were engineer grade signs, which are no longer allowed under the current MUTCD. And, uh, they only have a seven-year life. And we're using high intensity sheeting now, uh, for most of our traffic signs. And the ma- manufacturer's saying they'll guarantee that sign for ten years. And then after ten years, you either have to buy a twenty-two thousand retro reflectometer to make sure your signs are reflecting properly, uh, or do a night survey. And I've been doing a, a nighttime survey for the last five years. Uh, and what I do is, is I, uh, have members, maintenance crew members come in and they go out at night and they have a, a, uh, cup, some sheeting that shows whether it's good, bad, poor or excellent. And when they drive each road stop by each sign with the headlights and, and they record that. And I've been replacing the ones that are not meeting standards. I believe, is it 2013? The current MUTCD says that you have to have somebody at least sixty-two years old in that vehicle if you're gonna, uh, check your signs that way. So, uh, possibly when I retire, you could rehire me to-
I was just-
Go out and check the retro reflectivity of the county signs. But that's just a new requirement. So all of our, and we're having that discussion internally with, with planning and zoning and, and, uh, nine-one-one coordination, that all of our rural addressing signs, uh, are over seven years old and they're engineer grade. So they no longer meet standards. And, uh, the rule said that those signs had to be replaced by, uh, 2018. Everything had to be replaced. Now, I just got a blurb on a, on a computer that federal highway, they're looking at the rules and, and there's gonna be a final rule come out that is gonna take that, that deadline out. And word as such is that it's up to the local government entity to ensure their signs have the right retro reflectivity and, and it's up to them to decide when to replace them all. So it gives us a little bigger window than what we were looking at currently. But I can tell, uh, I, I'm getting older and it's harder to see signs. So I do like the, the, the high intensity signs. If you notice, some of the highways, the signs are so bright that the state is using. And they've went a grade higher and it's, it's called a diamond, a diamond, uh, face, which is, reflects a lot more light back to the driver than even high intensity. But that's the direction we're going. I think the whole population of the United States is getting older and the signs are critical when you're driving on the road. So I'm not opposed to it, it's just finding the additional funds. I know I came in three years ago and, and budgeted about seventy thousand a year, uh, to start replacing our engineer grade signs. And we have most of those replaced in the last three years. But even though we've replaced them today, by 2020, seven thousand of those signs we put up the last three years, according to the manufacturer, will have to be replaced in 2020 anyway. So, uh, we're looking at a, at a pretty good size, uh, uh, cost to do that. And I guess if we can get help from, from the federal government or hopefully this rural, uh, safety program is still in effect, uh, we'd just as well, uh, ask for that help also.
Now, Heidi, the signs that you replaced were not the street signs. They were like stop sign-
Right. I didn't replace, well, we've replaced some street signs and we're using the, the high intensity retro reflectivity, but, uh, we're only doing that when we have to replace them. Uh, we're not going out just blanket replacing the signs.
Heidi, do you, uh, between now and 2020, will you continue to do your annual replacement? Uh, you've got so much in your budget every year to replace signs and you-
Correct.
Will, will you be continuing that program up to 2020?
Yes, I'll have to, yes.
So this'll be up and above what you would normally be doing?
Correct. And some, some of those signs will last longer than ten years. It's just that we have to do the nighttime survey or, or have them checked to make sure. But there's, there's some that fail and, and typically the ones that, that face to the south and, and the west will deteriorate more rapidly than the rest of them because they have sunshine constantly through the whole day. So they're, they're the signs that typically need to be replaced before the other ones. So, yeah, there's some of those signs will, will have a life of fifteen years. But we don't know. And each year we do the nighttime survey and, and whenever we find one that doesn't meet the standards, we, we replace it, so.
I make a motion to approve the federal aid surface transportation program resolution for countywide signing project and authorize the chairperson's signature.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Used to be that all you had to do is make sure the horse you were riding wasn't night blind and he'd take you home.
He knew where to go.
The new rural addressing signs, we can't use capital letters or abbreviations anymore. It has to be spelled out and has to be spelled out with, with upper and lowercase letters. So what happens, instead of a, an, an eight-inch sign, now you gotta go to a nine and a half or a ten-inch sign because your G hangs down, you know, so it really changes everything.
I think those people in Washington just have too much time on their hands.
I think so.
Next item is a request for support of congressional bills, HCR 107, HR 1489 and the Nawapa Water Project. And let's see, Ali, do you wish to comment on, kinda report to us what, where we are on this?
I certainly can. This item was brought up at our last meeting on May first, um, by the La Roche PAC. You guys had continued it and, or basically deferred it and asked for additional information from Congresswoman Noam's office. I did get in contact with Brad Otten, which is her West River representative. You have an email from him in your packets. Basically, those two bills have been assigned to their respective committees and I think we're a ways away from any action being taken in Congress right now. You did receive an additional packet from Mr. Fairchild just yesterday afternoon in regards to the two billion dollar loss from JP Morgan. And they wanted to bring it to your attention that now is ever more critical to restore the Glass-Steagall Act. And if that would've been in place, this JP Morgan situation wouldn't have occurred. So they wanted me to make sure that you were aware of that. And if you guys are willing, they still request the approval of the resolution that they submitted.
Mr. Chair. Um, I also visited with Brad Otten. And first of all, on some of this, um, you know, it, there is just, there's just no movement at all to do anything with these at this point. And it just seems to me that, um, given the changing tides that happen in, in, um, in DC, it would be best to not take any action until we have something concrete that we can either say yes or no to. So, um, I, I, would it be appropriate to, to table this at this time?
Uh, correct motion would be postponed indefinitely.
So I would move to postpone indefinitely action on this resolution until such time as it actually is something that's happening in DC. Cause right now it's not.
I would, I would second that and I think it's a positive that there's not a lot happening in Washington DC at this time.
Sure to put that in a minute.
You're probably right. Thank you.
Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion, editorial comments or otherwise? Not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Before we move on to planning and zoning, um, let's see. I thought I saw something here on, um, I, I guess it's taken care of, yeah. Okay, item twenty-one, items from planning and zoning that are on the consent calendar. All four items relate to different aspects of the Spring Creek Watershed Management Project implementation. Two of them, one is for Amanda Richardson's approval of payment application. Second one for payment application or participant agreement is, um, John and Mickey Beeler. Then we have approval of segment one grant extension and approval of the RESPEC contract segment two. These are all on the consent calendar. Does anyone wish to remove any item from the consent calendar? Anyone from the audience that wishes to do so? If not, the chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent cal, or consent agenda for planning and zoning as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the planning and zoning consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We now go to the regular agenda item, item E.
Actually, this item, you know, is, has been advertised for ten-thirty, so we cannot hear this part of the planning and zoning item until ten-thirty.
So, Mr. Chair, what do we do? Do we make-
You can jump down, you can do your committee reports, you can do those in the public. Or we can take a nap in Albury.
That would be a little extravagant, I think. Uh, let's go to committee reports. Do you have a PowerPoint?
I have a schedule. You're really, you're really kinda teasing me to do that. Well, I, I, I guess I'll just make a comment on the evacuation exercise. Um, you know, uh, and, and you attended that briefing-
Yes.
-early in the morning. Uh, I was really proud of, of how we organized that. It seems, you know, when you go out there, they, they've organized it really well with their briefing and then it, everything kinda gets disorganized for a while until they get everybody together and it's all working. And I, I really appreciated being able to see how it works. Um, I also very much appreciated all the people from the county who, uh, were not only training others in how to do this, but, but were also participating and figuring out what we do that is right and what we do that needs improvement as far as evacuation exercises. And I, and I really, really appreciated the county who did that. So I, I, I wanna, you know, it'd be pretty hard to name all those people, but I, as a general rule, wanna really thank everybody who participated in that evacuation exercise. We have some great, great people involved in emergency management and fire departments and, and, um, the sheriff's department. And I just really was impressed all the way. So I wanna thank them for that. Fire service board met too on the ninth. You know, and they, they are, um, working on, on looking at different projects that, that need the funding that we provide through the Title III. And, um, they made some decisions on that. So, you know, other than that, it was not a lot.
I, um, as, as Commissioner Troutman indicated, attended the briefing, was impressed also with that. And later in the day, I rec, uh, received a call from Dustin. And he was reporting to a commissioner. Did you get a call also, Commissioner Harley? And, and I thought that was, uh, certainly a, uh, a good feature. Indicated, uh, kind of a comprehensive awareness of, of the need for communication.
You know, one of the things that came out of this, and I did visit, or Dustin talked to me that day, is, is we, we don't have a really good process for the commissioners. And we had talked about this earlier, um, that we should go forward with, uh, some training for the commissioners. So, you know, he, he's really good at understanding processes. And, um, so I'm, uh, I know that he's gonna work with a proposal of what we need to do because we're gonna be critical if something happens as far as making sure the funding's there, the, um, all of the, um, resources that are needed are there. You know, we'll have some pretty big responsibilities and he's gonna work on that. And I'm really, um, particularly thankful that he's doing that. He's done, doing a good job.
Yeah, I, I think, um, I, I, I agree. And one of the, the biggest things that can be a problem is for someone who isn't fully apprised of the process to try to intervene in a position of authority or what they think is authority. And, uh, it can be very detrimental. On the other hand, if there are things that we, the board, has to authorize to expedite things, we need to know those and be able to be in a position to do them on short notice if need be. It, um, but we can also know when to stay out of the way.
Yeah, you're right.
That's the most important.
Yep, that's exactly right.
Mr. Harley?
There was an emergency management, uh, board meeting last, uh, last week on Monday. And, uh, we were fine tuning the new agreement between the city and the county that, uh, I know I reported before that we're trying to adjust that, bring a representative from the volunteer, a volunteer, uh, member of the fire service board on that emergency management board. I think we're getting closer to, uh, having a finalized document that can eventually be brought to the county commission and the city council. Hopefully that'll happen sometime in June. So I think we're making progress on that. Other than that, I didn't have any other committees.
Uh, I've been to the weed board meeting and essentially, uh, things are moving along pretty much focused on pine beetle, but now, uh, weed spraying is, is on their agenda. Good department, well-run, very effective. CJ is back. Are you ready to assist us?
We had an opportunity to look at, uh, the, the statutes that are involved here is, uh, uh, ten dash four dash forty, which is the statute dealing with the veterans disability exemption application. Then also the abatement statutes under ten eighteen. And as I understand it factually, uh, what we're dealing with here is, uh, the initial application that was filled out- that was filled out by the applicant here was for the, you'd heard anyway, there was testimony or statement here that they'd filled one out previously, the very first one they did, and it was denied. That application was for the 2010 taxes payable in 2011. And as we all know, you know, the deadline to fill out that application would have been November 1 of 2009. The application was filled out, it was just it missed that November deadline, so it was denied. Just for information, we confirmed with the office that the application itself, the actual piece of paper, states right on the face of it the November 1 deadline. So there's notice right there to the applicant who's filling it out and signing off that they have a deadline. So also my understanding that when you fill out an application at the equalization office, they give you a photocopy of that, so you can take that home, and then they keep the original and process it. So the applicant, then, my purpose of bringing that out, would have had that notice, would have known of the November 1 deadline, and would have had that document in their hand for the better part of the next year. The next year now, the one that's at issue here for the abatement, the application would have needed to be filled out November 1 of 2010 for the 2011 taxes pay 2012. Again, they did fill out an application, but it was late. It missed that November 1 2010 deadline. And now then, finally, the rest of the story that's really not relevant here is they did a third one for 2012 pay 13. They got the deadline, they're going to get it, that's really not at issue. The question then is, they're seeking an abatement of that middle one, the 2011 taxes pay 2012. The statute on that simply says, "Any veteran who would otherwise qualify," which they do, "for this exemption but fails to comply with the application deadline," which they failed to comply with the deadline, "may petition the board essentially for an abatement." The board's discretion comes in under the abatement statutes, where you may, the statute says, it doesn't say shall, says you may abate. There's no other qualifiers. You know, in other words, only these excuses allow you to get the exemption, and these excuses don't. It's just, it's wide open. It comes down to the board's decision on what they want to do, if they want to exercise their discretion and authorize through motion the abatement or not. There's no qualifiers that I can find on that. The law simply allows the individual to come forward and say, "Well, I otherwise qualified," which they do, "I missed the deadline, but I still want the abatement." They have that right to ask, and you have the right to deny it or approve it.
Thank you.
Just a question to clarify. From what you presented very efficiently, it appears that if you want it, you must apply every single year.
You don't have to, actually, Commissioner Peterson. The statute goes on to say, "If you get it, you get it henceforth." If they receive the exemption, the veteran retains that exception until such time as the property ownership is transferred, the veteran does not occupy the dwelling or the property has changed in use. So those things have to happen, unlike the senior freeze that has to be filled out every single year, this one does not. You fill it out one time, you qualify it one time, and you never have to fill out another piece of paperwork unless one of those things happens. Just one of those.
And it strikes me that you'd only be late once.
It, I actually thought about that. The only thing I can say about that is that the application is for a particular year. So when you're late once on the year for the 2010 pay 11, you're, you know, the next year, you didn't get that application, the next year you got to fill one out for 2011 pay 12. It's a different tax year.
But.
That's only technical difference.
If you fill one out and it carries forward, then it strikes me that the office would know that you qualified, know that you wanted the exemption, and the process would continue until such time as those changes occurred.
And frankly, I know exactly what you're saying, and I don't have any heartburn over you going down that route and granting it if you'd like to. The statute just talks about you retain it once you get it. They did not get the exemption. That exemption was denied, nor did they apply for an abatement. So that original application that you're suggesting Equalization Office had, and the information's in there, it never did transform into an exemption, because it was denied. And the statute talks about, once you get the exemption, then henceforth you never have to apply again. But I know what you're saying, and I.
And maybe the applicant who is here might know this. When was it that they applied for the abatement on the 2010 taxes?
I don't have that, I don't have that date. The deadline was November 1 of 2009. The application must have come in sometime after that, but I don't, I don't know if Equalization Office knows, or you know, ma'am?
Well, we filed the first form because, last January, because it was the first time.
January of 2011?
Because it was the first time we were ever made aware that this even existed. That is why we missed the November deadline, is because we didn't even know about it till last January, when somebody decided to inform us.
So how come you didn't do it by November 1st of 2011?
Because we didn't know. We, okay. We filed the form in January of 2011.
Right, and it was denied. So it seems like you would have filed it again by November 1st of 2011.
Okay, what they told us is we didn't have to file it again, that this form would go into effect for our 2013 taxes.
Your 2012?
What we are requesting is an abatement on our 2012 tax, or our 2011 taxes.
Doing 2012.
Yeah.
So you're covered already on your 2012, which is payable in 2013. But to get your 2011 taxes covered.
We would have had to file in November of 2010, but we were not made aware of it until January of 2011, which is when we.
And my information, if I may, I'm sorry, my information is that there was a previous application for the 10 pay 11.
That was done in January of 2011.
Typically, our office would make them refile. They wouldn't carry that application over. I have never seen that occur in our office, that they were told, "Well, we'll just keep it for next year."
But you didn't have it, I mean, you didn't have it in time to do the 2011 taxes. You would have had to have that by January, or by November of 2010, isn't that correct? And the lady is saying it was January of 2011 before she was ever aware of any of this.
Yes.
And then she said that, at that time, she was told that we would just keep it and use it for next year? And am I understanding you right?
But apparently you did, because it's covered for 2011 taxes that are due in, or, yeah, 2012, 11 taxes, 12 taxes that are due in 13.
And when I talked to a gentleman down there a few weeks ago, he told me it was on file and that it would be okay for 2013.
Yeah, and I think it is.
Yes, it is good for 2013.
But it's just that you never knew any of this.
No, we were not aware of it till last year, and that's why our filing was late. You know, and the fact of the matter is, is I don't know when this was passed, but all of these years since it was passed, we have been paying our full amount of taxes. And all of a sudden, we found out about a little secret, and so now we.
How much difference will this make on your taxes?
Quite a bit, because our property is valued at $120,000, I believe, and I understand that the first $100,000 is exempt. Is that correct?
Do we have any other questions?
I'm kind of stuck here, I'm sorry. I thought there were, I guess I'm missing this, I thought there were three?
My understanding was that there was two applications, okay? So one application back for the 2010 pay 11.
That was an abatement application.
Yes, it wasn't an application.
And then this application for.
So the abatement.
That was apparently carried over.
So that first abatement application that was denied was a, it wasn't to do with veterans? It was. So there had to be an application at that time, and you would have had to have gotten that page that says.
We didn't apply because we didn't know about it. So after we found out about it, then we turned in the form, and then the gentleman for next year, okay? Then the gentleman told us we could file an abatement for last year's taxes that we paid last year, and we requested that, and we were denied. So now we're requesting abatement for the taxes that we have to pay this year.
And I, maybe I can try to simplify it like this. Our position is that somewhere in there on paper or verbally, the applicants would have to know that the reason they had to seek an abatement is because they missed a deadline. The reason they have to apply and were denied for this, the middle tax year that we're talking about, is because they missed the deadline. So our feeling is that the knowledge of a deadline existing in law was made known to the applicant. Nonetheless, with Commissioner Peterson's suggestion with which, apparently, there's been some kind of carryover from this last application for the 2012 pay 13. If you wanted to consider the untimely application for 11 pay 12 as an indication that the applicant qualifies, otherwise qualified, didn't get it, but otherwise qualified, and they're here now before you seeking an abatement, if you wanted to go down that road, that would be within your discretion to do so.
Okay, what you're saying is that we were aware there was a deadline, but we were not aware there was a deadline until we got a hold of that form for the first time last year.
Right. I understand that.
Okay.
We have, tell them that there was this comment. Would you come up, please?
Dan Richard, I had a similar situation that she has. I won't go into the details of it, but it was very similar to what she had. And I went to the gal that sits right at the desk when you walk in, and she told me that I was late, and she handed me another one to fill out, right there on the spot, and said, "This will be good, and you can go to the commission and request an abatement," which I did, based on the fact that the approval by the Veterans Administration was backdated into April. But the Veterans Administration, being the Veterans Administration, you don't get your paperwork until, I didn't, in fact, I didn't get it until December. And then they backdated the disability to April. Actually, two years before that.
So did we give you?
Yes, you did.
We abated your taxes?
Yes, you did. Well, you guys didn't, but the other board did abate my taxes based on that, that date that was backdated on it. So, and again, the gal that was at the desk, and I, I apologize, I don't know his name, she just, she handed me another one right there on the spot to fill out.
I don't think her staff did anything wrong. I mean, they.
No, I don't think that.
The lady didn't get in until January 2011, and it was already too late to cover her 11 taxes that were due in 2012. So, I mean, so I don't think, I don't think we can say, "Well, Jesus, staff should have filled out this form or something," because the forms have been filled out to cover 12 due in 13. It was just too late to cover the 11 taxes, and I think that's what we're trying to get resolved here right now, is the 11 taxes that are.
Mr. Chairman, she didn't fill out the forms, she just handed it to me. She said, "Here's the form, fill it out for this year," and I did.
And these people got the form.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't know what to do with it.
One other question, Jay, just so I'm clear. Regardless of what we do as a board with this abatement, does the application that's there now carry forward to where they don't have to worry about deadlines anymore?
It's my understanding that the application is in there now that was filled out January of 2011.
I don't have the.
I think that's what. Would, you know.
November.
Yeah, and the deadline is November of 2011, and it was filled out sometime in 2011. So they probably said, "Well, obviously, it's by November of 2011 if it was filled out in January of 11," so they probably naturally took that and said, "You're okay now for 12 pay 13." So all they're asking for is the.
And the time beyond that.
Correct.
As long as you meet the criteria in the law.
Absolutely. And so now it's just a matter of the abatement for the prior tax year.
So if we abate these taxes that are due now, the school gets their 100, they get their $1,000. How about Box Elder, Box Elder Fire Department? Do they get their money? The only one that doesn't get the money is the county.
Right.
That sounds right, but I don't know, somebody from the auditor room, if you want me to, Julie would know that.
So the county takes the whole hit, because if we abate, if we give her $100,000 non-taxed, she'd only get taxed on about $9,000. So in essence, the county's going to take the whole hit for the $2,000. And the school gets their money, Box Elder gets their money.
Everything.
Everybody gets their money but the county, and plus then we pay, we're the ones that are paying the difference to the school and the Box Elder.
Okay, we've already paid the first half of the taxes, so we would be perfectly fine if you would just abate what's due in November. We wouldn't ask for our money back for what we already paid.
Can you legally do that? Can we legally abate half a year?
At this point, I think I'd rather go get Julie, because she would have far more information on the literal abatement process.
Okay.
Let's do that.
Can we take a five-minute recess then?
If we can pass the motion.
Oh, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Are you voting for it?
All in favor, say aye.
A motion to remove this item from the table. I think we were discussing before we actually did that.
Second.
Did we have to come back?
I'll second the question.
We haven't, Ben, we've been just, we don't need to reconvene, do we?
I think Julie has some information that will answer your question, Commissioner Holloway, because we were not exactly accurate on that, so.
When the county does an abatement, this is what I understand the question. When the county does an abatement, by law, we have to re-levy the amount that the school district loses against that same school district the following tax year. So if you were to abate, in this instance, the entire thing, that $1,008 figure would be added to next year's tax levy for the Douglas School. All the rest of the taxing entities do not get to recoup that, only the schools. And the only people that pay that recoup is the people in that district, that school district. So not everybody in Pennington doesn't pay, but everybody in Pennington, the other taxing entities, lose their money, including the county, when you do an abatement.
Thank you.
And just to remind the board, when you're dealing with an abatement, though we give you the tax dollar information, the abatement that.
you the tax dollar information, the abatement that you're approving is just the change of the value, and the taxes we calculate off of that. So if you, if an, if a person has paid the first half and you abate a portion of the value, it's netted against what the second half would pay. It's, it's, you don't abate the first half or second half. You just abate the value, and then again, it's netted against the second half payment will equal the zero tax balance then.
Thank you, Julie. What's the wish of the board?
Well, I wished we didn't have to make a decision.
I agree.
But just because what I feel has been this board's position in the past on not abating taxes for people who have missed the deadline, for whatever the reason, and I understand this lady and her husband didn't realize that, that they, this was available to them until January 2011. But fact of the matter is, we have other taxpayers out there that fall into that same realm. And it could be seniors, it could be other veterans. So I, I think if we, if, if we would agree to abate this particular taxes, then we should be doing that for everybody. And I'm not sure that that's the right thing for all of the taxpayers. So my motion is to deny the abatement.
I'm going to second that, simply because I agree with Don. Every time that somebody who is a senior or, and, and we've had these other kinds of situations with veterans, you know, our state legislature sets up that, that deadline. And, and I am sorry when somebody misses it, it's very difficult, but they set it for, for a reason, so we have a cutoff. Otherwise, they should write laws with no cutoff dates for abatements. And then that would make a, a real mess for counties to collect taxes. So I, I, I have to second it, even though it's a reluctant thing.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I would like to thank you for listening to this and for slapping another veteran in the face.
We'll now move on to planning and zoning agenda. Second reading of the ordinance amendment.
This is ordinance amendment 1203 to amend section 511 W1 of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. And what this is, this is the second reading. It's changing the $500 administrative fee to the $500 penalty fee.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the change to ordinance amendment 1203.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the second reading. Any further comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further committee reports?
You just want to stay here and spend time with us.
Any items for the public? We're down to item 24.
Move to a jarring, sir.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.